Good afternoon and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting for Monday January thirteenth at four P M. It's about four oh five actually. So is there a motion to go into closed session for the purpose as stated on the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, there was a motion made by Ms. Davis and a second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go to closed session.
Motion carries. We will now go into closed session. Thank you.
And at this time, would our honoraries for McDees Creek Elementary School, please make your way to the front? Tiffany Kramer is this month's Engage Aspires to Succeed Certified Staff Honoree for McDees Creek Elementary School. Since joining McDees Creek as one of its original teachers in 2019, Tiffany has excelled in multiple roles, including first grade team leader, grade level chair, school improvement team member, mentor to new teachers, and cooperating teacher for student teachers. Known for her positivity and uplifting nature, her peers refer to her as Wonder Woman. She skillfully differentiates instruction, always seeking to refine her methods. Tiffany embodies the school's mission by being intentionally committed to ensuring high levels of learning for all students. Her "whatever it takes" mentality underscores her exceptional dedication to student success. Karen Finder is this month's Engage Aspires to Succeed Support Staff Honoree for McDees Creek Elementary School. Karen joined the McDees Creek team before the school even existed. She quickly became irreplaceable, known for her love of learning and children. As a first grade instructional assistant, interventionist, car line crew member, and yearbook advisor, among other roles, she is recognized for always being uplifting and encouraging, and as an extremely hard worker. Her colleagues describe her saying, "She always brings a smile to others, especially children." Would family members and Principal Capps please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? At this time, would Kaylee Clendenin please join our board members at the front, if she's here? Alright, it looks like our student honoree was unable to make it to tonight's meeting. So, Principal McCormick will present the certificate on the behalf of the Board of Education at a later date. At this time, we do have a few additional recognitions for this month. Could we have all of our students being honored for their holiday cards, please come to the front? It looks like we're missing a couple of these as well, but we will still celebrate all of our students. Tonight, we're celebrating the students for winning this year's holiday card contest. Our elementary school winner is Brisa Garcia from Robbins Elementary School. Our middle school winner is Presley Torani from Cranes Creek Middle School. And our high school winners are Isla Fleishenhar and Clara Stanley from Union Pines High School. These young artists showcase creativity and talent in our holiday card contest, and their artistic contributions have brought joy and warmth to our community during this festive season. Thank you to everyone who participated, and congratulations once again to our winners. And at this time, would all of our NCASBO honorees please make your way to the front? So, if you were not able to make it, but I'll still call their name out. So if you were not able to make it, but I'll still call their name out just to recognize them for their great accomplishment. Kelly Allman from Elise Middle School, Laura Blanton from Sand Hills Farm Life Elementary School, Amy Bosworth from the Maintenance Department, Tim Brown from the Transportation Department, Erin Holden from Vast Lakeview Elementary School, Keisha Jones from Robbins Elementary School, Brenda Mayness from High Falls Elementary School, and Paula Myrick from Cranes Creek Middle School have successfully completed the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials, also known as NC ASBO, Treasurers Academy Certification. The program includes various sessions on topics such as school finance law, internal controls, general accounting concepts, and many other subjects crucial to school bookkeeping. The primary focus of the NC ASBO Academy is to nurture future leaders in school finance and human resources. Their accomplishments will significantly contribute to enhancing school business procedures at Moore County schools. You all are invaluable assets to our schools, and we congratulate you on your success. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to exemplary work. We also have Barb Coughlin and Jessica Capps being recognized for earning their NC ASBO 2024 School Business Management Academy. This certification required them to successfully complete 21 courses, each accompanied by an assessment. The curriculum covered various subjects, including accounting, financial management, law focusing on legal responsibilities, and business office operations. The primary aim of the NC ASBO Academy is to cultivate future leaders in school finance and human resources. Their achievements significantly contribute to our district and enhance the quality of our school business procedures. They are both invaluable assets to our organization, and we extend heartfelt congratulations on their success. Let's hear it for our honorees. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Locklear for a special recognition.
Evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. As we are aware, we're celebrating School Board Appreciation Month, and I'm honored to take this moment on behalf of our entire district to express our heartfelt appreciation and recognition for the exceptional work that each of you does as a dedicated member of our Board of Education here in Moore County Schools. Through policy, through budget, strategic planning, you set the path for success for roughly 13,000 students across our 23 schools. Your unwavering commitment and tireless dedication helps to set the foundation for our district's continued success. You navigate complex decisions, advocate for our students and staff, and provide invaluable guidance that ensures our district continues to be one of the best in the state of North Carolina. Through your leadership and support, we've achieved significant milestones, upheld high educational standards, and maintained a nurturing and inclusive environment for our students to thrive. The countless hours, it's truly countless hours, that you invest, the thoughtful deliberations you engage in, and the passion you bring to your roles have a profound impact on the lives of our students and certainly the broader Moore County community. As Superintendent, I'm really grateful, I'm immensely grateful to you for your support, for your partnership, and I look forward to continuing this journey with you this year and the years to come. As a token of our appreciation from our schools, there's cards with messages from our students that have been placed on your desk. I know you enjoy reviewing those tonight and in the coming days this week. And once again, I want to thank you for your dedication to our students, to our staff, and our families of Moore County and Moore County schools. So please join me with a round of appreciation for our board members. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes our recognitions this evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take a brief five-minute recess.
Call the Board of Education meeting back into session. And at this time, we're at item four, Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis. Is there a second? Ms. Bruno? There's a motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. Davis and a second by Ms. Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And Dr. Dahl? Alright, motion carries. Yeah, Mr. Benway came in just a few minutes late.
Consent Agenda.
Okay?
It's unanimous, Senator.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we have, we're at the public address to the board and we have five speakers signed up to speak. Ms. Davis, would you call those speakers to the podium?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Just a friendly reminder, we have three minutes each. Mr. Batchers is going to put the time up on the clock. I'll call the first three and then the last two. I mean, he'll just come up in order. We have Ms. Lisa Moore, Mr. Tommy Phillips, and Mr. Vic Allen. I'm sorry. Turn your microphone on, please, if the red light does mean go. There you go. You're good. Thank you.
Hello? Okay, got it. Up here. Yeah. Hey, Board members, how are y'all tonight? Dr. Locklear, thank you for having me. My name is Lisa Moore and I'm a veteran teacher at Carthage Elementary and I represent the hardworking staff of our school. We stand here today to express our strong support for a public meeting to be held in February. We believe this public meeting is essential for communication and collaboration within our school community. We are ready to move forward with the building of a new Carthage Elementary and encourage you to vote in favor to hear from the public. Thank you for your time and consideration. We are Bulldog Strong.
Mr. Phillips?
Madam Chairman Calcutt and Madam Vice Chairman Davis, members of the board, and Mr. Locklear and staff members. I'm Tommy Phillips, a member of the Carthage Century Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about a proposal to replace Carthage Elementary School. In 2021, the Carthage Town Board adopted a resolution requesting that the replacement of the Carthage Elementary School be given the highest priority. The Carthage Town Manager Contact Demand requested that the Carthage Century Committee appoint a committee to support the town in promoting interest from citizens, parents, and supporters to achieve the goal of the resolution. The committee was formed by the Century Committee and I served as its chairman. I met with the Moore County School Administrator and learned that in the need assessment, the Carthage Elementary School had met the requirements for replacement years before. I realized there was a need to educate the committee and the citizens of Carthage on the issue. The Century Committee met on June 29th of '21 with the Superintendent and the Executive Officer of Operations and were presented a document exploring options for the future of Carthage Elementary School. That report outlined why the school needed to be replaced and the preferred site for the school should be a larger site than the existing site. The Town of Carthage called a special meeting of the Town Board, which was held in the Moore County Commissioners Meeting Room in November the 9th of '21. At that time, an unupdated report was presented by the Superintendent and the Executive Officers to over eighty people in attendance. Following the presentations, time for questions and comments from the Town Board and those in attendance was provided. The Town Board of Carthage in '22 updated the resolution to address the need to consider a new larger site for the school. Last week at your school board session, work session, Superintendent Locklear said that he would, it'd be his recommendation to replace the Carthage Elementary School on a new site and that he would request that a public hearing be held on the issue. I support his recommendation, his request to hold a public hearing. I hope you will support his recommendation to replace the elementary school and vote to approve his request to hold a public hearing. You'll be showing your support for our students, our teachers, and the Carthage community. Your board is made up of a talented group of people with varied backgrounds and experiences. You have an awesome responsibility and opportunity to move on issues of importance. You have a talented staff who I believe are ready to address the issues that require decisions. By working together and staying focused on students, teachers, and staff, you can, you can achieve the results and this could be the best year ever. Thank you.
I'm Vic Allen. I'm an educator from Calvary Christian School and I want to say Happy New Year and congratulations to the new board members. Like to start off a little bit of scripture from Philippians, Chapter 4. Therefore, my brethren, dearly beloved, longed for my joy and crown; so stand fast in the Lord, my dearly beloved; rejoice in the Lord always. And again I say, rejoice. Let your moderation be known unto all men; the Lord is at hand. Be careful for nothing but in everything, by prayer and supplication, with thanksgiving let your requests be made known unto God. And the peace of God, which passeth all understanding, shall keep your hearts and minds through Jesus Christ. Finally, brethren, whatsoever things are true, whatsoever things are honest, whatsoever things are just, whatsoever things are pure, whatsoever things are lovely, whatsoever things are of good report. If there be any virtue and if there be any praise, think on these things. You know, teaching kids isn't hard. I've been doing it for going on seven years now. And our kids are broke. We have a generation of broke kids. And you might think that I teach at a Christian school, we don't get those kids, but we get a lot of them. And it takes special care to teach them. You know, this new, this new school going in Carthage, I hope it's not a consolidated school. I thought, you know, that big elementary school you have down here in Aberdeen, it's so oppressive and so big for such little people. I discourage you to have a big school. Schools should be local. Schools should be a neighborhood. They should be personal, not huge. They don't get it. It's a scary place. I've been in that school down there. It's too big. But teaching kids isn't hard. You just gotta love them. You can't love that big. And the other thing is, you know, I love y'all, but I want to put you all out of work. I want to get rid of the whole public education system. I think private education is the best way to go. And I think we get more bang for our buck. Costs a lot less, it's a lot more personal, and a lot less confusion. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next, we have Mr. John Miziak and Ms. Meg Salz.
Board members, my name is John Miziak. I'm going to disagree with Mr. Allen. I think public schools are critical to our kids. My name is John Miziak. I'm a member of the VAS Alliance Club. We want to thank you for the opportunity to vision screen elementary kids in Moore County Schools, grades one through five. Our club screened ten elementary schools and our Northmore Club screened the remainder of the elementary schools. I don't know how many, I don't have the results from our Northmore Club, but our club screened approximately 4,000 students and more than 10% were referred to professionals for further examination. We hope those kids get the care that is indicated as being necessary. During the course of our screenings, I couldn't help but notice class sizes in the respective schools. Moore County has one A-rated school and one F-rated school. We rated both. We rated several of your B-rated schools. In every case, grades one through three, your F-rated school had larger class sizes than did your A and B-rated schools. I'm not an educator and never was. My research, though, does indicate that smaller class sizes do make a difference in achievement levels, especially for low-income and minority students, and the benefits last through high school. Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of personal privilege, if I could. Mr. Miziak, please thank everyone at the Alliance Club for the vision screening that you did and you've done throughout all the years. It's sincerely appreciated. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Meg Salz. I am the Carthage Elementary PTO President and I'm here representing the parents. We just urge you to give us an opportunity to come and show you all how supportive we are of a new school. If you haven't been to Carthage Elementary, please come, please visit. Please put yourself in the shoes of a five-year-old who's walking around, who could potentially at any time, it's very unsafe there. There's no, anyone could come on and get our children. If you haven't eaten lunch with us, please come into our cafeteria and eat lunch with us. Please sit in our classrooms. Please come before you say yes or no. Please see for yourselves. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you very much to all those that came to address the board. We really appreciate your time and your thoughts. I don't believe we need a recess at this time, so we'll move on to board action. I just want to remind our board members that with this process, we're going to have like a round of discussion where we'll begin with the board member that brought the motion and then we'll move it from that point. Just want to remind everybody about that. We are at item six. And Dr. Locklear, if you'll lead us through the action items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first item here for action is establishing a date for a public hearing to receive comment on my recommendation around the replacement of Carthage Elementary School. As the board's aware, Ms. Purvis and I presented this item last week and had discussion and background information as to how we've gotten to this point. And certainly pleased that this has been the culmination of multiple years of work, collaboration, of course, with the Board Construction Committee and the board as a whole, getting stakeholder input and feedback, getting to this point in this recommendation that we, I would recommend that the board receive feedback on to see what our next steps would be. I did ask Ms. Purvis before we turned it back over to the board for any discussion and question, just to give a little additional context and background, kind of walk us through the timeline, just to make sure we're all clear on how we've kind of gotten to this point. But this does come with my recommendation for this. And I believe, once we have a motion on the table, I believe Mr. Schwartz wants to lean on that because there's some additional information that needs to be there for a public hearing. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Purvis so she can give that additional background. Ms. Purvis?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Carthage was built in 1950 originally and has had several additions. In 2022, the Carthage Town Board of Commissioners drafted a resolution expressing their willingness to have a new school built on a new site. The district commissioned a comprehensive facility assessment which cited significant needs on the Carthage campus. The repairs to the Carthage campus would cost $13.5 million. These would be repairs and basic updates. This would not be any major changes or would it adjust the size of any core or any classrooms, nor would the buildings be adjoined to increase safety. After consensus and recommendation from the Construction Committee, following the review of data from the facility assessment and the safety assessment, as well as information from ITRE regarding the future growth and capacity projections, the board approved the master facility prioritized list in December of 2023, replacing, placing the replacement of Carthage with the ability to hold 150 to 200 additional students for future capacity as priority number two on the prioritized list. Following the approval of the master prioritized list by the board, consensus of the Construction Committee supported holding a stakeholder meeting at Carthage Elementary to share the two most viable options for Carthage moving forward. The presentation shared at the stakeholder meeting had been shared with the Construction Committee and consensus of the committee supported sharing that information in a broader stakeholder meeting. That meeting was attended by representatives from the staff, school improvement team, PTO, Town of Carthage, Carthage Centennial Committee, and parents. Attendees representing their various groups were presented with two questions. The first question was, renovate the old school or build a new school? All were overwhelmingly in favor of a new school. Next, attendees were presented with two options which had been reviewed by the Construction Committee. Build the new school on the current site. And we did provide with that option a drawing that we had gotten from an architect preliminarily, taking a look at how we would build on that current site and what that would look like, the work we had done there, as well as build the other choice, build the new school on a new site. After sharing the two possible scenarios and learning the constraints of building on the current small 7.6-acre parcel, the choice to build on a new site garnered one more vote of interest than the current site. However, attendees did share that they were not adamantly opposed to a new site. Following that meeting, the consensus of the Construction Committee supported having ITRE complete an updated review of the future capacity of Area 1. Updated capacity projections indicated that if we're planning for 10 years, a school would need to have a capacity of 600 to allow the whole elementary attendance number of Area 1 to be at a suggested 87% capacity in 10 years. And again, we talked about what that may look like, a cascading effect from school to school. While the two most viable options were the ones shared at the stakeholder meeting with consensus support from the Construction Committee, we did have the suggestion of a K-8 school brought forward in Construction Committee where a guest member of the Centennial Committee was also present. The idea of a K-8 gained no traction. In an effort to ensure we look towards the future and be prepared for capacity needs, at this time, we would recommend building the core of a new school. And when we speak of core, we're talking library, cafeteria, those common spaces, for a capacity of 600. However, we may only need to build the classrooms out to 450 at the time of the build. The plans would be as such, the addition of the classrooms could easily be added at the time we were to need 600 in the future. If we move forward and the decision to build a new Carthage Elementary is made, then we would need to take a closer look and consider economy of scale. And what I mean by that is that at the time of building, when we decide or if the decision is made to build, economy of scale means getting more while we're doing the project. We would probably need to look at both, what would be the cost of building the core with classrooms out to 450 versus building the core of 600 and classrooms out to 600, just to ensure we're taking the right steps and being fiscally responsible. At this time, with general consensus from the Construction Committee, we come to the board to ask for an endorsement to hold a public hearing on February 3rd here in this boardroom after the work session. No decisions have been made. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the public the opportunity to provide additional input on the Superintendent's current plan to recommend the construction of a new Carthage Elementary School on a new site with a core capacity of 600. This public input would allow the Superintendent and the board the ability to receive feedback on his recommendation. Thank you.
So my recommendation would be to have a motion to hold a public hearing on February 3rd here in the board meeting room beginning at 5:30 PM. Rich, is anything additional needs to be in that motion?
Yes, you should also specify, excuse me, any time limits for the public, for the public to comment at the public hearing.
My recommendation would be to use public comment policy, which is three minutes per public comment.
Okay. Alright.
procedural question on that, if I could. Since it's a public hearing, will the board be able to interact with the, with the speakers? I believe that's allowed under a public hearing, right?
For a public hearing, the idea is to hear from the public, not to interact with the public on that, to get feedback from the public. That's the purpose of the public hearing.
But the county commissioners have, they frequently go from a normal meeting to a public hearing. And when they go into public hearing mode, then the county commissioners interact with, or are able, they're not required, but they're able to interact with the public. I think it's valuable to be able to interact if someone's going to appear before us. I think it's valuable that we can interact with them. And I may be wrong, but I think that's part of the definition of a public hearing, is there's interaction as opposed to the public speaking role where there's zero interaction. Again, I could be wrong on that. I guess my question to fellow board members is, would you want to be able to interact with the public?
Yes. So they're gonna, they're looking right now to find out.
Just while they're looking it up, if I could, point of personal privilege, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I just, you know, it's really frustrating to, you know, sometimes, frequently, a public speaker, you know, says something. It would be great to be able to engage that person right there. First word, engage. So, especially if it's a public hearing of importance and we can have an exchange of ideas and thoughts.
I can read the policy?
Your policy 2300 on public hearings says that the board may from time to time, in accordance with law and its policy, conduct a public hearing to determine public sentiment on matters which merit board consideration. In order to gain maximum benefit from a public hearing, the board's role shall be as listeners rather than as active discussants. So that's your board policy on that.
Alright.
Just real quick, as a follow-up, what does the state law say? Is that, or does the state law allow discussion and the policy's more restrictive?
State law doesn't address it, one way or the other, on public hearings.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hensley. At this time, is there a motion to approve a public hearing to be held on Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at 5:30 to receive public input on the Superintendent's recommendation for Carthage Elementary School to take place here in our district office?
Can we have the discussion, please?
Well, first, we have to have a motion. Is there a second? Do we have a motion first?
The motion should also include the three-minute time limit.
And with the three-minute time limit. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Our second.
Alright. Motion made by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Johnson. Now, is there any discussion? And Mr. Hensley, you requested this to be on the action item, so would you please begin if there are any discussion items? And Mr. Batch?
I do. First, I would like to say that I think that we should look at increasing the time limit that the people be able to speak, maybe even suspend it. The county commissioners do that on a routine basis for public hearings. I think that everybody ought to be able to say everything they want about something of this magnitude. Secondly, I would, I would say that we should look at suspending our policy that restricts board members from talking because I think it should be an exchange of ideas, especially on some of this magnitude. I certainly know if I was a chair, I would, I would introduce that suspending the policy. Not that we want to dominate the time, but you know, it's certainly good to ask questions. So those are my first two things. I will say that, that, you know, based upon what was said earlier, I believe we, and I said this during the work session, I believe we have a flawed planning process. And the flawed planning process, even though Ms. Purvis distilled down what was said earlier, you know, said a week ago, you know, there were two questions asked, renovate the existing building or build a new building, right? That's conclusionatory because there's another option. How about renovate the existing building and build a new building? It's been the consensus of the board, or several board members have expressed, and we heard Mr. Allen express it tonight. I did not put Mr. Allen up to it for the record, but he, you know, many board members have expressed the importance of smaller community schools, especially at the elementary grade. And, you know, we have these big, what the previous chair called, I forgot, factory schools. And wouldn't it be nice to have community schools that the families who live in the core part of Carthage can walk to school or walk their children to school? And then we have another second smaller school out on the periphery along some, some growth corridor. Smaller community schools, although not as efficient, you know, sometimes efficiency's not the answer to education. You know, what's right is the answer to education. So the problem with our planning process, as articulated in the, in the work session, is we should present courses of action along with associated estimated costs, have discussion. Well, first we need to get input from stakeholders, right? Listen to what they say. Then go back, develop courses of action, then go back to the stakeholders, whether it's the public, whether it's our faculty and staff, whether it's the county commissioners, and present those refined courses of action with estimated costs on them. And then get the input on those refined courses of action. And then we make the tough decision and we select, because that's what we're paid for, is to make the tough decision on the course of action we ultimately decide. And in this instance, a very viable course of action where you can keep a small community school in the core of Carthage and keep the core downtown part of Carthage, you know, people who live there, and you could have a school out on a growth corridor. And this could easily be done by, you know, as Ms. Purvis said, maybe we build a, you know, a K through eight or something, but we build a 400, a school that will currently hold all the students. We build a new school somewhere. Then when that's completed, we move all the students there. And then we renovate the existing structure. And then, once the existing structure is renovated, everyone loves their historic buildings. It's really odd on schools, everybody loves their historic buildings until it comes to school construction, then they can't tear them down fast enough. As I noted in the, and I do not discount anything that our educators and our faculty and staff said at Carthage. I understand the conditions there, but I also understand that the schools that we sold, Southern Pines Elementary, Southern Pines Middle, Southern Pines Primary, and Aberdeen, Aberdeen Elementary, not a single recipient of those former campuses have torn down a single building. You know, those buildings are actually very strong. I mean, they need to be renovated. So I think that there's courses of action that were not considered. And I'm going to vote against this, but not because we clearly need it, look, not because we don't need a new school. We clearly need a new school. I'm voting against this because of the planning process. And all courses of action were not fully, were not fully explored. We should, and the additional reason I'm voting against it for the planning process is, yes, we have a notional list of nine or 10 priorities. And they all make sense. I mean, they all need to be done. But we should have a clear, before we execute the first one, we should have a fairly clear idea and viable courses of action and road ahead on all of them. And then as money becomes available, then we just execute whichever one makes sense based upon the type of funding that we have. And that brings me to my, my next point is that, you know, what's the first thing you do when you decide to build a house or buy a house? You're like, how am I going to pay for this? We should already have the, and unfortunately, the previous board, we squandered two years. This should have all been done over the last two years, but we should already have it worked out, how the funding, you know, is this going to be a bond issue? Are we going to pay cash? I mean, how exactly? No discussion of that, other than giving some order of magnitude to the county commissioners, but we don't know how we're going to pay for this yet. And that's the first thing. So I believe that we need to tweak our planning process. And again, I'm going to vote against this for those reasons. This, I assume this is going to go forward, but I'm very hopeful that within the next month or so, we sit down, you know, maybe during the retreat coming up in a couple of weeks. And, you know, we talk about our planning process. planning process, and we talk about a, a better way, not just the way that it's kind of been done in the past. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah?
Oh, we're gonna go around. We're just gonna go around. Yeah, you'll have your turn. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just a few comments. I would, I would say, on the first comment Mr. Hensley made about lifting the time limit, I think that would be valuable to increase the time from three minutes to maybe five minutes, and then, of course, keep it flexible. As folks have things to say, I would hate to have someone kind of coming up and addressing us and have to cut them off in such an important topic. So I agree with that. Definitely agree that we need to move forward. Really excited to be moving forward with this project. Obviously, I've been in Carthage Elementary many times. It is definitely necessary to get a new school for Carthage, and so I'm excited to get that moving. I would also agree with Mr. Hensley about the planning process. I think that would be a good, worthy topic in a work session, or started at the retreat and then continued the conversation in a work session. I agree that we need a, a mapped-out, coordinated plane of attack, because we have some big-ticket items that we really need to focus on. And in concurrence with that, I would love to see, in a work session, a conversation with the board on what we've learned about the last four schools that we built. You know, what were the lessons that we learned? What were the things that we would do differently, whether it's process, whether it's building, whether it's size? I think that would be really valuable to review. And I think, and I also want to express my full confidence in Ms. Purvis and her team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Benway.
First of all, I, I'm a great supporter of the notion of community schools. I think they have more, more going forth than, than we realize right now. And in saying that, I think this next get-together, whatever we call it, ought to be part of the continuing discovery, I think, that we, we continue to need. We do have to look at some more courses of action, exchange, socialize those things, and, and then move this down in a, a logical progression. So I, I agree with Mr. Mr. Hensley. I think we ought to have a greater exchange with the public in this next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bruno?
Yeah, I also agree that the courses of action were not fully explored. Since we started talking about building a new Carthage school, and I have visited Carthage school, I can't tell you how many times in the last two years, and you need a new school, and we need a new school. That's absolutely 100% true. But I have, since we started talking about this, I've been asking, please ask the community what they would think about a K through eight, and it's always, well, the people aren't interested, the people aren't interested. Tonight's the first night I've ever heard that the K through eight was not, not something.
It was just discussed in committee meeting. It was not brought to the-
Oh, it was not brought to the public?
It was, it was in a committee meeting.
What?
But committee meetings are public.
Okay, so the people of Carthage know that they could also have an option of K through eight? Nick Paserna went to Carthage, it was K through eight?
When it was discussed in committee, if you ask for clarification of me, Ms. Bruno, there wasn't any desire to support any further, Madam Chair?
By, by whom?
By committee. It really didn't go any further. There really wasn't any discussion of let's, let's do a study on it.
But the committee is not the public.
You're right, but there was no feedback from the public of desiring to go that way that I'm aware of, Ms. Bruno.
All right. Well, I, I agree. Mr. Hensley has an idea. I would love to see, I am a firm believer in community schools, where teachers know the parents, where the kids go to church together, where they eat together, where their friends are all together. I am a huge believer in that. And I think when you keep the system, the kids in a, in the same school, instead of hopping them from here to here, so that they have to learn new teachers, new ways of doing things, traveling, I, I think it's upsetting to parents. I, all I want to do is to put this on the board for the parents, the teachers, those people who are really involved. I just want to put that on the board. Maybe they'll hate it, but all I want is for them to see that it's, it's an option. Is that asking too much?
If you're asking for my response to that, Ms. Bruno, because this is a board discussion at this point, but what I would say, offering clarification, Madam Chair, if I might, before we were to present anything like that, and offer it and put it out in front of the public, we'd have to do some study. We'd have to produce some, some facts around the efficiencies or non-efficiencies of such a model in a place like Carthage, which we talked a little bit about in committee, the K-8 model, why it exists at High Falls and Westmore, and some of the background there, and what that would look like if you created a new K-8 in Carthage, and the impact and on student assignment, et cetera. It's a pretty complex issue.
So are you telling, are you telling me no, that you won't put it out to the public?
Ms. Bruno, I'll do what the board directs me to do. I'm just giving you my feedback.
And that's all I want, is I just want the people to have an option, instead of saying, we're gonna build you a new elementary school, and we're gonna build it someplace else. Let them have their say.
That is the purpose of the public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
But it's the purpose only with what you're offering.
No, the, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear what they want, and that's their golden opportunity. So I think you're gonna get what you're asking for, because you brought it to the table tonight, and they're gonna be able to respond when we have our public hearing.
Okay, so when we have our public hearing, is somebody gonna stand up there and say, okay, we're, we're suggesting this, 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 here are your options?
Well, we're not suggesting yet. We are just, we've, we've got a plan, we want to hear what they say. We've been, obviously been getting information since 2021, so we're at the stage now of this process where it's time for a public hearing.
Okay. I, I get all that, Robin. I get that. But I just want people to know that there are other options besides, we're just gonna build you an, an elementary school.
And I think, I mean, you've shared it tonight, so I, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
And I really, really, really want a new school.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Davis, your turn.
All right. Just a, a little bit to maybe help Ms. Bruno. I did see a parent in a very involved community, excuse me, Carthage Elementary, mom at Food Line, because that's where you're gonna have your conversations with her, with her. And, and that idea has been circled out. It's not, it's not necessarily been presented in this capacity, but the message is out there. So if they want it, they will let us know that they want it. However, Mr. Hensley is right, we still, we still have to make the ultimate decision on what's best, and the efficiencies, the non-efficiencies, all that. It's, it's ultimately up to us, but I do know that the, the idea has been out there. And that's, I think that it's just time to, to hear from the public, get it scheduled, and, and move forward.
Okay. And, and my, my point, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
Okay. At this time, um, oh, Dr. Doll first, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Doll. Well, yes, okay. I think the, the suggestion for two community schools, and the suggestion for K-8 have been put forward and made in good faith. But I asked a question about feasibility study for one of those options last week, and the answer I got made it clear that, that would be a tremendous amount of work for the staff, and that would basically be taking the process back to an earlier stage. So I, I feel that we heard from the public tonight, and I feel that even without having heard from the public tonight, we have a sense of urgency to move forward with this school. It may be that we can tweak our planning process some, but I trust what has been done. There has been stakeholder input, there has been an orderly process, and we have the superintendent's recommendation for a school of a certain size, well, a couple of options, 450 and 600. I have taught in a school with more than 450 students, where the principal knew the name of every student at the school, and so did most of the teachers. That is not an excessively large size. My kids went to an elementary school in that size range. I think there's every reason to move forward and give the students of Carthage this new school that they so desperately need, and not take our planning back to an earlier stage, and thereby prolonging it. So I'm in favor of scheduling the hearing, you know, as, as in the motion. And I think that if we're going to change the, the format of the speakers, that needs to be a separate motion. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Doll. I agree with Dr. Doll, that I feel like there's been a lot of work, there's been many years that have been put into this plan. I feel like that Carthage, because I've been in the building multiple times for multiple years, it's time for the, for the children to have the building that they deserve. I appreciate all the hard work and expertise that's been, that has been put into this plan. I appreciate the efforts to get all the community input that got us to this point, and I feel like it's time to hear the public hearing, to hear more about what they want at this point, since we've been at it since 2021. And that's really all I want to say. I will support and approve this motion. So is there any more discussion?
Round two.
All right, yeah. Mr. Hensley?
So I have a few responses. And first of all, let me say, look, everybody knows that Carthage needs a new school, zero doubt about that. We're in unanimity about that. It's just how do we do it? What's the planning process, and what do we end up with? So, you know, several things were brought up. I'll discuss them, and no, just in random order. First of all, the point about the sense of urgency, I already, I had that written down. By God, we need to have a sense of urgency about everything we do, especially construction. We wasted two years. I, I will admit that. But the, I believe that the assertion that it will delay the planning is, is not true. And I'll give you an example. Have, have, have there been any designs for this 650-seat school? Has an architect, like, done anything?
Or so, because there's not been a decision.
Understand, understand why, right, understand why. So really, from a planning process, there would be no difference between building a new 350-seat school, moving the students there, and renovating the other one. We wouldn't lose any time, because no one's designed the new school yet. Correct?
There is no design.
Right. So since there's no design, if, if the community decides, you know what, we want smaller community schools, so that more students can walk to school, pickup lines will be shorter, you know, all the good things that come along with that, that would not cause a delay, because you would build a school, move all, you know, move all the students there. So anyway, there are additional courses of action that would not cause any delay. So we can just check that off the list. The point about, the point that was made earlier about, well, the people have already chosen this option, I had a discussion with somebody after the last meeting, and, you know, the planning process that we follow, historically, we followed, Sandhills Community College has fallen with the Innovative High School, is, they show, they show up and present one course of action. You know, take Innovative High School. We're gonna build an Innovative High School, and we're gonna have an amphitheater, and we're gonna have fountains, and we're gonna have red caucated woodpecker, you know, whatever, right? They present that, and when someone presents one option, everyone goes, yeah, I want that. Really, because you guys want a new school, and you want it, and you need it, whatever gets me there the quickest, right? Well, let's present multiple courses of action, intellectually explore them, and then decide. So going back to Ms. Doll's comment about taking the, I think Ms. Galcut made it too, taking the process back a stage. You know, I, I'm sorry that the planning process was flawed. I mean, I've only been, that's only been stated for a couple of years, right? And if we have to step back, is it better to execute a mediocre plan, or to step back and maybe execute a much better plan? I would say that, I mean, the board dawdled for two years, we're making zero progress. If we step back for a month and take another look at it, and by the way, I, I support, I support that, there's no, there's nothing wrong with having the hearing. I know that's incongruous, and I said I'm not gonna vote for it, but that's because I'm staying on principle. But there's nothing wrong with having the meeting. I just think that we should present additional courses of action. So then, going quickly through this, already talked about shorter pickup lines for smaller community schools, that's a big one, sense of urgency, definitely need that. The lessons learned, yes, that's a great work session topic, because they, we need to make sure that we remember our lessons learned. And also, and I firmly believe this with all, all of my being, I have the utmost confidence in Ms. Purvis and her staff, you know, as Mr. Johnson said, there's zero doubt about that. With that said, I would make a motion to modify, and my first motion to modify is to change the time limits to, for the speakers to six minutes.
Don't second that.
Subsidiary motion?
That's a motion to amend the main motion by changing the time limit only from three to six minutes, correct, Ms. Hensley?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I meant to say.
All right. And I believe it was seconded by Mr. Johnson?
So do we take a vote on it now?
Now you have discussion on this.
All right. Do we have discussion on the time limit for the public hearing?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, do we, can we make a motion that we vote for this?
This is a motion to amend the main motion.
Motion to amend the public hearing time.
To six minutes.
To six minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Doll, did you say aye? Okay. Any opposed? Did you say opposed, or you consent?
Me, I said aye.
Okay, aye. All right, all in favor. We all, we all agreed unanimously. All right, back to the discussion.
So I make a second motion to amend, and my motion to amend is, and I'm not sure this is the proper way to do it, but I want to make a motion to amend that we do, we suspend our policy for this public hearing, allowing board members to have interactive discussions with, with, if allowed by state, it is allowed by state law. Let me back up. I make a motion to amend that we suspend our policy for this public hearing to allow board members to interact with speakers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Davis, is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, and I, I, I just have two quick points on this. One is, well, three. One is, it's always frustrating to, you know, have, you know, want to ask somebody to clarify or whatnot. And I think this is important enough. I would, I would expect board members to include myself, to be very judicious in requesting that, and, you know, in, in exercising that. But I think it is important that, you know, if, if a member of the public, or one of our faculty and staff, we want to hear from you all, and, you know, we'll stay here as long as possible. But if we have a question about your plan or your thoughts, I think it's important that we be able to ask that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Davis?
I'll just, oh, oh, Ms. Doll can go first.
Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
No, I don't mind waiting, since you're on the phone. It'd be easier that way, if that's all right. All right, Dr. Doll?
All right. I, I just want to say that, that I think that the purpose is to hear from the public, and I have some doubts about our collective ability to, to keep our mouths shut and, and recognize that it's, it's time for the public to speak. And so I would, I would be opposed to this amendment. I would like to keep it just for the public to speak. And if they have something important to say, they will tell us, and they do not have to be made to conform to our questioning.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I was gonna go along the same lines. I'm, I would like, I would like to be able to question, if there's a question, can we limit it to only... Not to get into any type of debate at all with the public, but if we need clarification, if we could limit it to clarifying questions... if we could limit it to clarifying questions, one line questions only, possibly, I don't know how that would look, but, anyway, that's just my thought right at this moment.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. Benway?
I'm here.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Bruno, any other discussion?
No, I think that's a really good, wait, Hannah, will you repeat what you said?
We would need to have a way to limit ourselves if we, if we allow ourselves to ask questions, and how we would manage that.
Yeah, I, I think that's accurate.
So that would be another...
Oh, well, I...
Do you want to amend your motion?
No, 'cause I, well, I mean, I, I, we, let's discuss this, I mean, sure, but how do you control that?
That's it.
You know, I think, I, I really think, I think Ms. Doll and Ms. Davis is, um, notwithstanding the catfights we have amongst ourselves, I think that their, uh, I think their fears are unfounded.
Okay.
I, I think that we would all be responsible and respectful adults, and ask meaningful questions for clarification.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
I'll just say, I, I think it's a good idea to have clarifying questions, and I think I would have confidence in the board chair to manage, manage the questions and keep us on pace and keep us on target.
All right. If there are no further discussion points, let's take a vote on this motion by Mr. Hensley to allow for interaction within reason, um, managed by me or vice chair, whoever's in the seat, during the public hearing. Mr. Schwartz, any comments or anything?
The motion was to amend, to suspend Policy twenty-three hundred for this public hearing to allow the board members to interact with the speakers.
Okay.
That's the motion.
All right, that's the motion, we had a second, we had discussion, let's take a vote. If you're in favor of suspending that motion, excuse me, that policy for this purpose, this one and only purpose, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
No.
So two against. So it passes. All right, so back to our first, our original motion, uh, we're talking about our public hearing, uh, we just ended with Mr. Hensley, is there any other discussion? Um, Mr. Benway, on the public hearing motion?
No, not from me.
Ms. Bruno?
No.
All right. Ms. Purvis, did you want to say anything else?
I was just gonna clarify that, um, the ADM that we currently have at Carthage Elementary School is three hundred and forty students. So, when we're thinking about the six hundred capacity, that would be planning for ten years out. So just wanted to make sure we all understood, right now, if we were to move the students from Carthage into a new school, we only have three hundred and forty students. If we were to divide those, you know, soon, between two schools, it's less than a hundred and seventy-five students a school. Um, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that small ADM that we currently have at Carthage, and that the future plan is thinking about ten years down the road. And I do apologize, we weren't able to get a feasibility study together, thinking about K eight in a week, um, because there'd be a lot to go into that, but I can just share an overview that, uh, for what Dr. Doll asked of me, and that is that, in looking at it, you know, K eights are, are, we do have two K eights, we have one at Westmore, we have one at High Falls, and currently, they are our least efficient schools to operate. Um, they are there because of geographical need, the small population, we have less than three hundred students in each of those schools, so I don't, I know that doesn't answer the entirety of her question, but just touches on what I can share, because we didn't have time to get it all together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Johnson, did you have any?
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
Did you have any follow-up discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Doll, did you have any follow-up discussion?
No, I just, thank you.
Ms. Purvis, I don't know if she heard you.
Okay, yeah, she heard you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Ms. Davis, any follow-up discussion?
No, none at this time, thank you.
All right. Again, I want to reiterate that I have full confidence in the work of our, um, Moore County Schools team. Uh, did Ms. Bruno say she...
Ms. Bruno would like me to repeat something.
Okay, all right. Time out for me.
What did you say about the K through eight, the schools we have?
Currently, we have two K through eights, and they are our least efficient schools.
Okay, what do you mean by least efficient?
The cost of operation for those schools in comparison to other schools, and we talk about how much it costs to operate that school, and we divide that by the number of students, the amount it costs us per student is a lot more than our other schools. Those schools currently exist because of the geographical location of that northern end of the county, it's spread out, and because of that low population. So High Falls has less than three hundred students K eight, and Westmore has less than three hundred K eight. So to divide those schools, we'd have an elementary of a hundred and some, and a middle of a hundred and some, which wouldn't be fiscally responsible.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes.
Is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, forgot what I was gonna say there, but, uh, I do have full confidence in the work of our Moore County Schools team, we're at the point where we need public hearing, we need to hear from our public at this point, after these years, and so, um, with discussion finished, we need to, um, make a vote at this time. So, if you'll look back at your executive summary, all those in favor of the motion to approve a public hearing to be held on Monday, February third, 2025, at five thirty PM, to receive public input on the superintendent's recommendation for Carthage Elementary, and that will occur right here in the boardroom, if you are approving that, if you'll say aye.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sir?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
The motion is amended as to hold a public hearing on February third, 2025, at five thirty PM, in the board meeting room, on the superintendent's recommendation for a new Carthage Elementary School, and has amended with a six-minute time limit per speaker, and, uh, without the limitations of Board Policy twenty-three hundred.
Yes, sir. Thank you for saying that in clarity for me. So is everybody clear? All right, if you're in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our board action is amended fiscal school year 2024, twenty-two... Oh, sorry?
Item B.
The laminate, okay.
Laminate, yes.
Oh, I'm looking at a bad copy. All right, so we're at recommendation for the, no, no, phase three, safety laminate, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Second phase of the three M safety laminate in large gathering spaces for students. Uh, Mrs. Purvis presented on this, uh, at our work session, uh, and as the board, uh, is aware, um, this is a safety laminate that allows us to harden the exteriors of our campuses, we had phase one of all entrances across all campuses and schools completed before, uh, the holiday break, and now this is for the second phase of large student gathering spaces, comes with my recommendation for approval. Certainly happy to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, so we're at the discussion phase, and, uh, I guess I need to start with a motion. Is there a motion, and I'm finding my executive summary here, I'll just read it from the screen, is there a motion to award the contract for three M safety laminate for large gathering spaces to blink signs in the amount of one hundred thousand sixteen, five hundred and eighteen, and thirty-four cents? Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Ms. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bruno, all right, we're ready for discussion. Uh, Mr. Benway, we'll start with you this time. Any discussion on this, um, motion?
No, I, I con, I concur in the recommendation of the superintendent.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bruno?
Uh, same.
Mr. Hensley?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, no comment.
Dr. Doll?
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
No comment.
All right, and no comment for me as well. After this is, uh, seeing no further discussion, um, I'm gonna look back up, do we have a motion to approve?
You got the motion, the motion's made.
Oh, sorry, we're ready to vote, right?
Yep.
All right, so we're ready to vote on awarding the contract for three M safety laminate to the, for a large gathering spaces to blink signs in the amount, it says on the screen, one hundred thousand sixteen, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're unanimous, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
All right, let me get my good copy, we're now at item C, the amended fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget resolution for second quarter. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mrs. Edmonds presented, uh, this information at our work session last week, um, and shared the details of the amended budget resolution for the second quarter. Uh, this does come with my recommendation for the board's approval, and certainly happy, happy to answer any additional questions the board may have.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget resolution for the second quarter as presented?
So moved.
All right, move by Ms. Davis, is there a second?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Johnson, is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Hensley?
Um, Dr. Locklear, um...
Yes, sir.
I seem to recall making a request at the work session, um, one of the requests was, um, to have the, uh, dollars saved, uh, the number of positions, uh, unfilled, let me back up, I believe that during the work session, I asked that you and your team, uh, research and provide the projected funds that we've saved year-to-date from unfilled positions. Were you all able to do that?
Yes, sir, I, I was able to share that out in an email to the board, approximately one point two million, uh, in payroll savings, uh, that Ms. Edmonds is, is estimating at this time, but that is a, a number that's a variable, it could change from day to day.
So that's halfway through the fiscal year?
Through the first two quarters, yes, sir.
First two quarters, so we're halfway through, okay, and I understand it's variable, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, do you have any questions, discussion?
No, no further questions.
Okay. Dr. Doll?
No questions for discussion.
All right, Mr. Benway?
Nothing here.
All right, Ms. Bruno?
No.
Ms. Davis? And I don't either.
I have a round two question.
Oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
I was saving my, I was, I'm, I'm doing this round two thing.
You're doing great, you're doing great.
We're gonna have round one and round two. Um, so, uh, I'm vote, I'm voting against this, right, and it is, let me say this, I have, I have a, I have an understanding and sincere appreciation of everything that Ms. Edwards and her team does, I understand, and you've heard me say this many times, I understand and appreciate the complexity of accounting, and the diligence that it takes, and especially the complexity of government accounting, and I, I have the, you and your team have the utmost, I mean, look at the people that we get trained, I mean, we consistently get people trained in it, we have professionals in it, but, but, there's some failings of what I consider failings of the board. I'm voting against this for two reasons, and this hasn't, none of these have anything to do with you or your team, Ms. Edmonds. Uh, we promised the voters a zero base budget, not, not you, not you, but, uh, you know, previous people on this board, uh, promised a zero base budget, where, you know, we go back to ground zero, and everything's justified, and you build it from the ground up, that's a big, that's a big task. Uh, it's a big ask, but we did promise it, we haven't delivered it. Um, and the other thing that concerns me about this process is, um, and this might just be a question of, um, the, uh, you know, what level of abstraction's appropriate for a board, you know, and should be fifty thousand foot view, but diving down, and I just, I'm used to budget execution and looking at accounts and percentage execution, and that way, you define where you're overspending or underspending, then you figure out why, and then you make the adjustments. Uh, that may happen on a routine, regular basis, you know, with Dr. Locklear and his staff, but I've not seen, we, we see it here, you know, this is, this is a big sixty thousand foot view of that, but I, you know, I, I frequently get the impression where I discover, well, let me say this, I, I frequently discover places where we've drastically overspent in one area with no reporting to the board, and the board has no awareness of that, that's probably a budget committee shortfall, by not doing that, 'cause I'm sure they didn't do that, reasonably sure they didn't do that. So, I'm voting against this, uh, strictly on those two bases, but again, Ms. Edwards, your team does an exceptional job, and I appreciate it, I certainly appreciate and understand it, so thank you.
All right, Ms., any other discussion? Um, Mr. Johnson, you good? Were you, okay. Ms. Davis?
Um, I would, uh, like to say that our budget two-by-two committees is where you, if you, if, when we attend the two-by-twos, is where we get the more line-by-line and zero-based, um, information, there's a lot of information that comes at that time that might would answer some of the questions, or catch some things that we might need to keep our, our ears to the ground on for spending, and that's all.
Okay. Dr. Doll, any other discussion points?
Me, thank you.
All right. Just to make sure, Mr. Benway?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Bruno? All right, um, good as well. Um, Mr. Badger, well, you, you already got it up for me, thank you. After seeing no further discussion, um, we need to approve the amended fiscal school year 2024, 2025 budget resolution for the second quarter as presented. If you're in agreement, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We have one nay. So six in favor and one nay. All right, we are on item D. Dr. Locklear?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, this is for the refresh of student Chromebooks in Area Three for Grade six to twelve, Area Three being our Pine Crest feeder, uh, pattern area. Um, this is, uh, something that, um, the, our technology team led by Mr. Eklund plans out these refreshes, uh, to happen, uh, in such a sequence where we're not refreshing the whole district, we're refreshing one area at a time, our six twelve students use these devices, uh, and have them, uh, given out to them on a one-on-one basis. Uh, there was some questions at the work session around, uh, why move forward with a full refresh of the whole area versus a, um, partial refresh, uh, certainly understand that, it's great discussion, I just wanted the board to know, I still continue to support and recommend that we go forward with a full refresh, as we found, Mr. Eklund and his team over the years have found this is the most effective and efficient way to roll, roll it out, uh, and to be able to upkeep, um, those, those, uh, devices for our students. It's also the most effective way to make sure we've got working devices for our students to support their instruction at the six twelve level. Um, you know, if we were to go with a partial refresh, that would put us in a position of maintaining older devices and service, uh, that would increase the, the labor on that, uh, also increase the repair expense on that, as those would be out of warranty, 'cause they'd go out of warranty at the end of that four-year cycle. Um, and it would, um, certainly put a, a big impact on our technicians to have to manage that, uh, and, and figure out which devices are working, which aren't, and then redeploy those, uh, across our district. And so, uh, certainly, it is my recommendation that we move forward with this refresh, if the board approves it, um, we then would be moving forward to our commissioners, uh, hopefully at their January twenty-first meeting, 'cause by law, since it's a lease purchase, we're also required to get their endorsement of the lease purchase, and so we'd be moving forward with that, uh, I think, at their January twenty-first meeting, if, if this is approved by the board. So, this does come with my recommendation, and certainly happy, myself or Mr. Eklund, to answer any additional questions.
All right, thank you very much, um, Ms., we're, oh, yeah, sorry, about forgot. So we have a motion?
You need a motion.
Sorry?
You need a motion.
I need a motion, and I'm looking for, uh, according to the executive summary, to approve the lease purchase of Area Three, Grade six twelve, student devices, contingent on final approval by the Moore County Board of Commissioners, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, by Mr. Benway, and now we're at discussion. Um, Ms. Davis, would you like to begin this time?
I have no discussion.
Okay. All right, no comments?
Other than a thank you for, to Mr. Eklund and his team, 'cause I know they do a great, a great deal of work that we would never be able to do without him.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Dr. Doll, do you have any discussion points?
I'm sorry, um, only, only to express my, my confidence in the plan, uh, which we went over in detail during the work session, and, and my confidence that this is the best[1770.23] the work session, and my confidence that this is the best plan, and I will be voting to move forward with it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Mr. Hensley?
Yeah. I've got a few questions and comments. Had a question for Ms. Eklund, Mr. Eklund, but I can't remember what it is. I'll make my points, and hopefully I'll remember what it, what it is. So people made, you know, we discussed this in the work session, and I'm opposed to this, and I'll explain why. But first, let me, let me give my, 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 I'm a computer scientist by education and by job, right? So I know a bit about this. I was trying to think of curriculum vitae. I was trying to think of a big academic word. I probably didn't even say that right, did I? Close. Thank you. Anyway, so let's talk about this. Oh, I remember what I was gonna ask Mr. Eklund. So lease versus purchase. What's our lease rate? What interest rate are we paying?
I'd have, I'd have to look, I wouldn't want to quote that incorrectly. It's, it's in the documents for, for, for the lease in the schedule. We could provide that.
Yeah. The reason, the reason I bring this up is a lease with purchase, basically, you're just paying someone interest. So if we, if we just purchased these, it would be less expensive, because all we're doing is paying someone interest. And if we just purchased them outright, and I apologize, I didn't think about this in the work session, my mind went down another path. If we purchased them outright, we wouldn't be paying interest to someone else. And also, we wouldn't need county commissioner approval. So in the future, you know, and maybe this time, we could look, and, you know, if we're paying 10% interest to the lease company, then why are we paying 10% interest to the lease company? Why don't we save that 10% and just pay cash? And I just don't, I don't know what the lease rate is.
I can offer clarification on that, Mr. Hensley.
Yeah.
Mr. Eklund shared that we were fortunate with the ESAR funds and things of that nature. We were able to outright purchase devices over the last refresh outright purchase, because we don't have those funds. That's why we were moving forward, going back to our model of a lease purchase. And if I'm reading this right, it looks like a .349 lease factor, which I assume is a three-and-a-half percent lease, lease interest rate.
Well, that's a good interest rate. I mean, if you do that. That answers my question. I mean, if the, if the, if the, if the interest rate isn't confiscatory, then, you know, it makes sense to lease it. Anyway, so here's my points as to why, and that's an aside, I just thought of that when I was looking at this. So here's why I'm opposed to it. Computers, especially Chromebooks, which, again, they have solid-state drives, I assume. So there's really no point of failure. I mean, they just, you drop it and it breaks. It's, there's no wearing, I mean, keyboards break, and this and that. But they just don't fail. They just don't, so we use them for three years, and then we cycle them out. But if 100% of them worked at the last day of the third year, then probably 80% of them are gonna work the entire next year, and, and 50% will work the entire fourth year, and probably more than 25% are gonna work the sixth year. You see what I'm saying? So, so at the end, let's, let's say, right now, we replace machines. Well, again, they all work now. For the next year, probably 80% of them will work. The year after that, probably at least 50% of them still work, and the year after that, 25%. Using those numbers, we're gonna spend 500K a year, right? 500K a year. The first year, if 80% of them work, and we just don't replace them all, we will save 400K. And then if 50% of, I just jotted this down, the second year, we would save 250,000, and the third year, we would save 125,000. That's a total savings over three years of $775,000. That's a savings more than half. I understand the complexity of configuration management, but I also understand saving 775,000. To Mr. Eklund's point that he made, and he's 100% correct, look, we don't have the people to do this, and I, we also need to get you in a better building. I mean, you know, we need to get you, you know, I understand the challenges of configuration management, and I understand the challenges of trying to support this. But with 775K, you could hire a full-time person just to maintain your, an additional person to maintain your Chromebooks, and those, that person could have other duties as well. So computers don't fail binary. It's not like, whoop, they just stop working. We talked in the work session, these are not gonna be end-of-life for several more years as far as the Android operating system. My companies personally, you know, we're, we operate 100% off used servers and used laptops that we bought off eBay, of all places, you know, a decade ago for our servers, maybe not a decade, but, you know, our laptops five or six years ago, and they're still going strong. Replace some batteries here and there. So when ESAR funds were, the whole, the whole computer thing is a scam anyway. Remember when we had textbooks, everyone loved their textbooks? Oh, go to computers, and they will, you know, you'll save the printing costs, right? So, Mr. Metcalf, have we saved any money from printed books to instructional material on computers? Yeah, very little. They just charge the same as if they printed it or not. I mean, anyway, it's the whole, that's, that's an aside, the whole promise of technology. There's other reasons to have technology in education, but saving money was not one of them, as it turned out. But anyway, I would say that, and I'm voting against this, others, you know, you know, it's likely to pass, but in the future, we need to take a hard look, because the days of ESAR funds, money falling from the sky are over. We need to be good stewards of the taxpayer of money. And if we can look at stuff with a little additional configuration management, maybe we hire another person or two, and you can do the math, then it makes sense to, to, you know, it cuts down waste to the landfill. I mean, there's no downside to keeping this equipment in service and then retiring it as it fails, as long as you have the staff to do it. Anyway, those are my points. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. I'll, I'll be voting for this, and I obviously have great confidence in the IT staff and their team. I will say that just logistically and realistically, a four years on a student device going back and forth from home is a good end-of-life, just from having worked with these. They're just, they take a lot of wear and tear. I have cleaned many, many Chromebooks in my life. I still have the chemical burns on my hands. They are refurbished, and they are continuing to be put in use and serviced in our elementary schools, and I know that that's part of refreshing, the refreshment plan. Only thing I would ask is, I love the sustainability plan, and I would say that next time we go to purchase, it'd be good to have an updated plan, just mapping out the next four or five years. Where do these devices go that are coming out of Area, was it Area 3 we're doing? Yeah, Area 3. And where are they being distributed to? So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We haven't heard from Mr. Benway yet. Mr. Benway?
I apologize. I wasn't at the work meeting to get the whole flavor for this, this thing. I think what David says has significant merit, and I think what Mr. Johnson is saying, we need to track, I think, for the next purchase cycle and see where the real cost savings might be. I'm gonna go ahead and vote for this current, current proposal. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bruno?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Hensley on this, and I am going to vote no, because I think it's time that we take a good, hard look at what we're spending. What? Oh, I thought somebody said something. Oh, God bless you. I think that we need to take a good, hard look at what we're spending. I need to, I think that we really need to explain things to the taxpayers, and, I mean, I know that my computer is not a fourth grade, but I've had my computers for eight, nine years, and everything's fine. But I know they don't go back and forth. So I, I'm gonna join with Mr. Hensley and say no.
All right. Dr. Doll?
Hi. I would like to mention just a couple of things. One, my colleagues who've been in the schools, and I imagine especially Mr. Johnson, have seen something which I have seen, and, and my colleagues that have not worked in schools may not, which is the way that students who have not personally paid for their Chromebook treat their Chromebook. And it is abusive. They slam them. They, they can't press the keys. They have to pound the keys. So, so that is one thing that I think shortens the lives of these things. You know, we think solid-state, no-moving parts, it's gotta be reliable, but they are subjected to, we're, we're kinda euphemistically saying, carrying it home and back, but they're subjected to some pretty rough treatment. The second thing I wanna do is draw an analogy. And I'm not saying that, that this analogy proves anything, but it, it can help us think about a problem in a different way. If you watch a framing crew building a house, you will see some pretty big pieces of lumber being thrown in the scrap bin. And if you're somebody like me who builds stuff out of salvaged lumber, it almost makes you wanna cry. Why do they do that? They do that because it is the most cost-efficient for them, because they are paying a lot of money for that crew. And for that crew to work efficiently, they've gotta start each cut with a whole piece of plywood or two-by-four or whatever it is, and not be spending time waiting for one person to pick around and find the biggest piece that might, might fit the bill. And I feel like what is being proposed to deviate from a plan that works, that is efficient, it is cost-effective, is to, to create one that is, that is ineffective, that is analogous to having the whole crew wait while one person picks through the waste pile for a piece that might possibly be used. Yes, you're using the lumber more efficiently, but overall, you're being less efficient. You're wasting more money. So I'm, having worked in schools in a couple districts, I'm convinced that what Mr. Eklund, the plan Mr. Eklund has put together is, in fact, an efficient and appropriate way to proceed, and I will be voting in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Davis?
The only thing that I would say is that, that these are devices in the hands of children and not in the hands of adults, and I think that that really is the, the line that divides as, as far as I'm concerned, so I would be in favor of it.
Just finally, I know that a lot of time and effort and years of tweaking the plan of how to keep devices in children's hands so they're ready for use for all the variety of ways of learning. They use them for some of their textbooks. They use them for iReady, for their assessments, their, you know, EOG state testing. We have to have quality equipment, and I really value the expertise that Mr. Eklund brings to the table and his team, so I will be voting to approve this as well. So we're on round two. Is there any member that wants to start with round two of discussion on this point?
The only thing that I, the only thing that I have to say is a bit of a rebuttal to what Ms. Doll said, and, I mean, I'm not gonna belabor it. I am gonna have a request, and I think Mr. Benway or Ms. Bruno, one of them expressed this, but I don't accept the premise that Ms. Doll made, that this is the most cost-effective solution. I mean, that's a, that's an unsubstantiated assertion, but, so I don't accept that as a premise. But what I would say in, in response to that is, Dr. Locklear, you know, next time, and this was someone else, I think it was Ken, said this, is next time, we really should look and see if there are alternatives. And that alternative may be hiring additional staff, because it may be less expensive to repurpose these and hire an additional person or two that you could use in other place. I mean, just back of the napkin math, and I understand it's not perfect, because it'd be repair parts and stuff, but you'd save $750,000 over three years. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, Charlie, I'm gonna need to get you to raise that up a little bit. There's a block. Thank you, sir. Let's vote to approve the lease purchase of Area 3, Grade 612 student devices contingent on final approval by the Moore County Board of Commissioners. If you vote to approve, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two nays, five approves. All right. So the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If, thank you, sir. If we can keep going, everybody doing well? We're at item E, endorsement of the 2025-27 strategic plan revision timeline and scope of work. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Stewart presented this overall timeline and scope of work for revising the district strategic plan that's up for revision. That went through the 2024 school year, 2022 to 2024. This is an overall outline of the timeline and how the work would take place. There was one question at the work session related to this timeline and plan of when, what other meetings will the board be having as a result of this work? The only one that's calendared right now, in addition to the current work session calendar and board meeting calendar, would be that second day of the board workshop, which is January 27th, would be the first step towards working on revising the district strategic plan that Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Stewart will be helping to facilitate with the board. But with that, this comes with my recommendation for the board's approval. Dr. Metcalf and I certainly open any additional questions the board may have.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing the details from Dr. Locklear, do we have a motion to approve the 2025-2027 strategic plan revision timeline and scope of work?
So moved.
All right. Moved by Ms. Davis. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Benway. Is there any discussion? And this time, we'll start with Mr. Johnson.
I love the random nature.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe there was some question at the work session about potential dates for the called meetings. Is that something that, that we've?
Yes. January 27th is the only additional called meeting right now.
That's the only one right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then?
Based on the direction and work of the board, there may be need for additional meetings, but that's hard to predict at this point. But January 27th is the only one in addition to other meetings that are already on the calendar.
Gotcha. Okay. That was my only question.
All right. Dr. Doll, any questions on that? Any discussion?
Nothing from me.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
No, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Benway?
Nothing here.
Ms. Bruno? Mr. Hensley?
Yeah. I'm the one who requested this be an action item rather than consent agenda, specifically as Dr. Locklear said. I wanted that special-called meeting. I wanted to make sure that everyone could make it, rather than vote on it and then find out, you know, someone's out of town or whatnot. So I have zero objection to this. I look forward to it. I would tell my board, fellow board members, you know, please put lots of thought into this, show up with a list of things, and, you know, let's discuss them, let's debate them, let's get input from the other stakeholders, and then by God, let's, let's figure out what we're gonna do, and then let's do it. So please put your thinking caps on and show up with ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So hearing no further discussion, and making sure I can read, we need to approve the... Okay. Sorry about that. We need to approve the 2025-2027 strategic plan revision timeline and scope of work. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any, any opposed? None. So unanimous vote there. All right. If we're good, we're gonna keep rolling, and it's time for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no additional information to report tonight. Other than to again thank the board for their engagement, their work, their time, truly, you're serving your community and our students and our staff and spending countless hours doing so. So I just wanna say thank you, and I'm honored to serve along with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. And now we're at section eight, board comments. And Mr. Benway, we'd like to start with you, please, sir.
No comment.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bruno?
Yes. I would like to go along with what Shannon said and to, to offer my condolences for William Hagerty and for Nick Pisserno's son. These are two tragedies that, that really, really hit us. And I just wanna congratulate all our teachers and our students and our staff for doing and our staff for doing a great job and getting our school year off to a great start. Well, thank all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hensley?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yeah, just a few things. Uh, first, uh, thanking again the staff for all the time and energy they put into getting everything prepared for us and, uh, being able to answer our questions at the work session and the business meeting. I'm excited about moving forward with Carthage Elementary. Um, I agree that that's been a, uh, and whenever we were doing the campaign, that was something that I heard a lot, that there's, uh, action needed there and I'm really excited to move forward with that. Um, just to make sure the public, uh, is aware of our, uh, retreat coming up as a board and I'm just looking forward to getting to know folks a little bit more and also kind of figuring out, um, the rhythm of the board and how we approach committee meetings and work sessions so that everyone's input is valued and respected. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Dahl? Any comments?
Yes, I want to, yes, I want to express my, uh, thanks to members of the public who came in to speak to us and to make sure that, um, everybody's there and anybody watching this, the reason why I'm not present is that I have been really sick all week and still am and do not want to present soon because nobody knows what I've had.
Thank you, Dr. Dahl. We hope you feel better. Ms. Davis?
I had, I have nothing at this time other than my sincere thanks to our staff and Dr. Locklear.
All right, thank you very much. I'll conclude tonight. Um, I want to thank our SROs and our technology team and our school administrators for all the hard work they've put in to prepare for this meeting. I want to thank our board members for our productive meeting tonight. I also want to point out, this beautiful board room we're sitting in is beautiful. Haven't seen it like this, um, for many years. And we thank all those that contributed to the makeover. I want to congratulate again our employees and students who were recognized tonight. We're so proud of you and thank you for representing our school district's quality and dedication. Thank you to the schools for the board appreciation cards and for sharing your talents with us tonight with our students that began with our pledge and inspiration. We do look forward to hearing from our community through the public hearing process about replacing Carthage Elementary School. Remember it's Monday, February 3rd at 5:30 right here in our board's work session. We did have an option to amend how our public addresses us, so I hope you'll come. Thank you to Dr. Locklear and our staff for ensuring the safety of our students and staff last week during the inclement weather. Um, I do want to share that I received a message, we all did, from Deeds Creek PTA President, Ms. Lauren McKenzie, that the Deeds Creek Elementary PTA received the National PTA School of Excellence designation for the 2023-2025 school years. They're only one, they're one of only six elementary schools in North Carolina to receive this honor. And it demonstrates the active engagement, empowerment of our school families to build that stronger school-family partnership. Finally, I want to remind our community about next weekend's upcoming Martin Luther King celebrations. Thank you for being here and I look forward to continuing the noble work of public schools with our board members, our communities and the Moore County Schools team. All right, at this time, seeing no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Everybody have a great night.